Okay, could everybody please take those seats? We would like to get this meeting started.
You probably don't.
It's a little different because it's your board, too.
No, there's more to it. I'm hoping it will.
All right, thank you. Let's call the City Council to order it is Monday, March 7th at 7:30 PM. Would you all please rise for invocation? Alderman Homan, would you lead us in invocation?
Yep. Please bow your heads. As we meet tonight for the City Council meeting, we come with grateful hearts. We thank you for the provision of a beautiful community and an extraordinary citizens. We thank you for the dedicated individuals who serve and protect us. As we swear in members of the Fire Department Emergency Services tonight, we ask for a special blessing on them and their families. We also ask for their protection in the line of duty. We also remember those from our community this evening, serving in the armed forces to protect our safety and liberty around the world. We pray for their protection and their safety. We ask that you bless this meeting and that we would conduct our business in a manner that is pleasing to you. Amen.
Thank you, Alderman Homan. Alderman Mueller, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Brown.
Here.
Rusado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we do have a full City Council. For the record, any votes that are taken tonight, I will be voting in the capacity of the Alderman, not as the Mayor, but any of the other functions that are happening here tonight, I will be conducting as the Mayor pro tem, as the Mayor is not available tonight. So we'll move on then to item four, which is items to be removed, added, or changed. I would like to move items eight and nine around so that we would get the ESDA Volunteers' warrant in before we do the Fire Department, and then we will not have a closed session. Anybody have anything else? Okay.
I move we approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Alderman Atack, and then second was by Serone. Roll call.
Atack.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Atack, would you present the consent agenda?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place some file Committee of the Whole Minutes for February 2nd and February 9th, 2016. Committee Development Quarterly Report. Pre-Commission Minutes for September 2nd, 2015, and October 14th, 2015. Approvals February 26th, 2016. Payroll of $763,873.25. I don't have, I can't open my computer, so I do not have the... Thank you. Accounts payable check register $3,791,463,093. City Council Minutes for February 1 and February 15th, 2016. Resolution 16-06-R authorizing the purchase of one 2016 International 7400 Dump Truck chassis from Rush Truck Centers for $75,992. Resolution 16-20-R requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the 2016 Loyalty Day Parade. Ordinance 16-11, a variance for detached garage. Applicant is 514, for applicant 514 Main Street. Ordinance 16-13, update to the 2015 Property Code. Resolution 16-24-R, approval of 2016 zoning map. Resolution 16-25-R, police authorized tow contract. Resolution 16-27-R, award of contract for the Northeast and Southeast Substation Maintenance to Siemens Industries. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Atack, second by Starr. Roll call, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Next item is item number six for matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody in the public wants to address the Council at this time, you can do so, but you need to come up to the podium. Okay, we'll go on to item number seven, Chamber. Is anybody here from the Chamber? Howie.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm sure everyone here is here to listen to me talk, so I will make a very long presentation to you this evening. Actually, we do have a lot going on at the Chamber this month, so I would like to share with you some of the events that we have coming up. We have a ribbon cutting tomorrow at the Pride Stores Inc., which is the BP at McKee and Randall, and so please come and join us at noon for that if you can attend, and then stay for lunch. They're giving 50% of the proceeds from Taco Urbano to HC Storm School, so a good business and community partnership there. March 11th, we have the Advanced Window and Siding Ribbon Cutting at 4:00 PM. They came and presented to you last month. On March 12th, we have the Sure Movements Yoga Studio Ribbon Cutting at 11:00 AM. On March 16th, we have our monthly open, free and open networking event at Wilson Street Tavern from 4 till 6:00 PM. We'll have food provided by Pell Joey's as well, and that's sponsored by More Than Mugs. Would be remiss if I didn't mention that we have Restaurant Madness coming up in Batavia March 21st through the 25th. I believe we have 22 local Batavia restaurants that are participating this year. They are offering many different offers throughout this period, but in general, they're offering 25% off your bill at the restaurant. So please shop local always, and especially at our local restaurants, March 21st through the 25th. We have our Eggs Benefit Event on March 22nd, where you can learn about the benefits of being a member of the Chamber. That's for current members and prospective members. March 23rd, we have our BCU starting up again, which is our Batavia Chamber University. We'll be offering a business jumpstart program where from 4:30 till 6:00 PM, you can, we've partnered with Wabanzie again, and you can learn more about how to grow your business. Then the next thing is a Workshop for Success on March 30th. We'll be developing power tools for success, another way to widen the focus and how you can also grow your business by thinking outside the box. So just a few events that are happening through the Batavia Chamber this month. Also wanted to introduce to you another local business representative this month that has recently joined the Chamber, also won an OLE Award for their expansion and renovation of the car wash at the Pride Store there at McKee and Randall. And again, I wanted to introduce to you Mario Spina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing tonight? First, I wanted to thank the Batavia Chamber Commerce for all they do. We greatly appreciate it. They've been a great help to us. My name is Mario Spina. I'm the CEO of the Pride Stores. We're a family-owned business. My father started a little over 40 years ago. We have 12 Chicagoland locations, and we feel very blessed and honored that we can call Batavia home to one of those 12. When we acquired the site from BEP, we, the last few years, have been trying to clean up the location, both inside and out, and then we recently added two new offerings to the location. One, we replaced the existing car wash with the new conveyor car wash, and we also added a new restaurant concept called Taco Urbano. The new car wash, we knocked down the old building. It was a rollover car wash that seemed better days. We built a new building, put a new conveyor car wash in, state-of-the-art equipment, gets a great wash, a good price. And then we also added a new restaurant concept called Taco Urbano, which I mentioned. This was created in-house by our corporate chef. It's our third restaurant concept that we have in our locations. We have another one called Urban Counter. That is, we have four of those sites. One's in Aurora. We're about to open up one in St. Charles, and then we also have a concept called Pride Cafe that we have in Geneva, which is pretty close. But the Taco Urbano, we're very excited about. We're extremely excited about being the first one in Batavia. It's Mexican, authentic Mexican food with a little bit of modern twist. The food's great. I really hope everyone comes out and tries it because I know they'll come back. But then also, we like to provide, participate in supporting our community. So one thing we're doing tomorrow, like Howie mentioned, is doing a fundraiser for HC Storm. We're doing 50% of the proceeds from Taco Urbano. From 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, we'll go back to the school, which we feel very good about supporting the school, but we also really hope people come and try the food because, like I said, I think they're going to come back. So that's what we do locally, what we do through all of our stores, is we mainly support two charities. One's Heart of the Marine, and another one is a program for children, which used to be Cadence and now is Northwestern. They change their names a lot, so I get confused on it. Heart of the Marine provides support for veterans as a return from service. So we provide a portion of every cup of coffee we sell goes back to the Heart of the Marine, and a portion of every gallon of gas we sell goes towards previously Cadence, a program that helps support children recover from cancer treatments. So they go through chemo and helps provide support and just an infrastructure to help them deal with going through those treatments. So those are the two things that we support company-wide besides the local communities as well. And one thing the Batavia Chamber Commerce mentioned about discussing was the revenue that we generate for the City of Batavia. Last year in 2015, we raised $414,000 in sale tax revenue, local city tax, and motor fuel tax. That does not include real estate taxes or the money that we generate for the state or the county. This is just for the City of Batavia. In 2014, we generated just over $494,000. Our sales are actually up per gallon, but with the decrease in fuel costs, the revenue goes down. But I have sheets here, too. I could pass out for you guys later if you'd like to see it. But that's really it. You guys have any questions? I'd be willing to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Well, I just want to thank you for your being in Batavia and your participation in all the local things that it sounds like you're doing. I had no idea that you were this involved, and so being, you know, in the position that you are that you can do that, I certainly appreciate it, and I appreciate you being involved with the Chamber. It's a great organization to be in, so thanks for all, everything you do.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the swearing-in of the ESDA volunteers, and then we're going to go right on into the next item after that, which is the Oath of Office for the Deputy Fire Chief and the Battalion Chief, the full-time Lieutenant, and the probationary full-time firefighter. And I understand the Chief is going to give a brief introduction of each one of these individuals. Before we turn it over to the Chief, though, I did want to say that I, I'm truly honored as an Alderman to be able to sit here tonight as Mayor pro tem and do the swearing-in in the place of the Mayor. I think it's just, it just sets so much for our Fire Department that, under the leadership of Chief Teiki, that we're able to recruit young men and women for ESDA, to get involved that way, and then hopefully move on into the Fire Department, and then, as, you know, it's sad whenever somebody leaves the Fire Department, but when they leave, that opens the door for so many other people to advance in their career. And it's great to see that we've got the qualified and the committed people in our department under your leadership, Chief, that are able to move up into those positions. So I just want to say that I think it's just great that we've got such a good Fire Department. So with that, Chief, if you want to go ahead and do the introductions, I'll come up and get ready to do the swearing-in.
Okay, we have two new ESDA people to swear in tonight, Matthew Arnoldts and Harry Reinicki. I did see Harry here. Harry, come on up. And is Matt out here?
Yeah.
There you go. All right, come on out here. Matthew is a, he lives in Batavia and he works in Aurora for international paper. And Harry, Harry, raise your hand so they know which one you are. Harry lives in Batavia. He has an associate's degree from the College of DuPage. He's a certified weather spouter, and he's a ham radio operator.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, now if you guys could just raise your right hand, and if I can hold this paper up and a mic at the same time, and then just repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Harry Reinicki.
Having been appointed to the position of volunteer.
Having been appointed to the position of volunteer.
With the Emergency Service and Disaster Agency.
With the Emergency Service and Disaster Agency.
In the City of Batavia.
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of volunteer with the Batavia Emergency Service and Disaster Agency.
Of the position of volunteer with the Batavia Emergency Services and Disaster Agency.
Got it. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, from the fireside, if I could have my, the four people, three of them are being promoted and one is being hired, if they could come on up here. Italian Chief Jan Kouskas is going to be our new Deputy Chief. He was hired as a paid-on-call firefighter in 1987, hired full-time firefighter in 1990, promoted to Lieutenant in 1999, promoted to Battalion Chief in 2006. He's, he has been the firefighter of the year in Batavia in 1999 and 2004. He has an associate's degree in fire science, a bachelor's in business, and a master's degree in public administration. He served our country in the US Navy from 1984 to 1991. And he is a certified chief fire officer and an incident safety officer. Our next person to be promoted is Lieutenant Mark Sawinski, who will be promoted to Battalion Chief. He was hired in 2001. He was promoted to Lieutenant in 2012. He was the firefighter of the year in 2008 in Batavia. He has a degree, a bachelor's degree in education. He's a certified fire officer and a certified fire instructor, and he has been our training officer since 2012. Our next person is firefighter Scott Stevens, who is being promoted to Lieutenant. He was hired as a paid-on-call in 1987, hired full-time in 1993. He was the firefighter of the year in 1998 and 2008, and he is a certified paramedic, a fire officer one, and a fire service instructor. And then our brand-new firefighter, Peter Penkava. He is leaving the Barrington Countryside Fire District, where he was a firefighter, a full-time firefighter and paramedic there. He's also a part-time firefighter and paramedic in the Cary Fire Department, and he holds certifications as a firefighter III, a paramedic, and a fire apparatus engineer. So we're very proud of all of them.
Very good. Chief, were you going to invite the families up at some point, too?
Yes, as, as soon as you swear them in, we're going to do a little badge-pinning ceremony, and we'll work our way down the line then.
Okay, then we'll start with, we'll start with that. Please raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Jan Kouskas.
Having been appointed to the position of full, of Deputy Fire Chief.
Having been appointed to the position of Deputy Chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia.
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of the Deputy Fire Chief.
Of the position of the Deputy Fire Chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mark, if you'd raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Mark Sawinski.
Having been appointed to the position of Battalion Chief.
Having been appointed to the position of Battalion Chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia.
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Battalion Chief.
Of the position of Battalion Chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Scott, if you'll raise your right hand.
I, state your name.
I, Scott Stevens.
Having been appointed to the position of full-time Lieutenant.
Having been appointed to the full-time Lieutenant.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia.
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of full-time Lieutenant.
Of the position of full-time Lieutenant.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
With the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. This is what you have to look forward to. Please raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Harry Penkava.
Having been appointed to the position.
Having been appointed to the position.
Of the probationary full-time firefighter, paramedic.
Of the probationary firefighter, paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia.
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
In the Counties of Canaan-DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of probationary full-time firefighter, paramedic.
Of the position of firefighter, paramedic.
Paramedic. With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
It's always tradition in the fire service that when you get promoted or when you get hired, that somebody close to you pins the new badge on you. So we'll start with Deputy Chief Jan Kouskas, and to pin on his badge is Janet, his wife, and his family. And for new firefighter Penkava, his wife Jamie and family, I believe. Does she bring up Max, I believe?
Maybe, maybe not. He might be busy.
Peter's mother, by the way, is a lieutenant in the Cary Fire Department. Congratulations to all of you, and I wish you all the best for many years to come.
Okay, I guess we'll go ahead on with the rest of the city business, then.
Chief, I'm doing it.
Yes.
I'm doing the text to 911.
Oh, you're doing it, okay.
Unless you want to.
No, but Stacy's here to, to give you any backup that you need or to help you out or answer any questions.
Great.
We'll give her just a couple minutes. I'm thinking everybody's going to leave.
Right.
Part of the old, right? Said.
This is what I've been trying to figure out before I signed up. I've been trying to figure it out. Yeah, I might do that.
Okay, let's carry on with the next item on the agenda. That is item number 10, and that's presentation on the text to 911. Alderman Starr.
Thank you, Alderman Brown. As every, as most people know, I am the TRICOM representative from the City of Batavia from the City Council, and a new program that's been rolled out in our area is text to 911, and I can't emphasize enough that this should be only used as a last resort. As in any text, there is a chance that it might go, not go through, and so texting can cause many errors if it's not used only in emergency. So this is something where if you can pick up the phone and dial 911, you should always dial 911 first, and texting should be used only as a last resort. So Stacy Hall, who's the executive director of TRICOM, is here, and so Stacy, is there anything you'd like to add to this, if you want to come up and talk to it?
No, I think you did a great job, actually. So we're just encouraging the public, I think it said that on the press release, to call if you can, text if you can't. Honestly, the main, the main reason this movement is happening across the nation is for speech and hearing impaired community, and then if anybody's in an emergency situation where they can't speak. It is almost identical to how you would have a text message with somebody else that you may text with throughout the day. We don't get location information on it. It's a very slow process, and we don't get some of those cues that we get on a traditional 911 call, where we may pick up on voice inflection, background noise, and we have scripted questions that we have to ask. It's a very time-consuming process when you're trying to do.
But we have deployed it, and CaneCom has, so they cover a lot of the unincorporated areas. And City of Aurora has deployed it. And from what I hear, Elgin will be deploying it soon as well, sometime this spring. So you may or may not be in an area of the county that has it or that's able to receive that text. Okay? Any other questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we'll move on then to item 11, which is ordinance 16-06, amending Title 11 of the Chapter 5, Section 9 of the municipal code. Alderman, attack.
Yes, this is an issue that we've been talking about since last fall. And right now, we have a ordinance in front of us that will waive both the requirement to put a sidewalk in and the fee associated with the sidewalk if it's under a certain distance from parks, schools, bus routes, and other sidewalks. And Scott's gonna give us a little more background on this.
Yeah, this has been something that we've discussed for the last several months and gone back and forth with the committee on this. We last put this back to the committee on February 23rd, and the committee talked about various options staff laid out for possible considerations for how we wanted to deal with this particular situation. Right now, we require sidewalks on all new homes to be built on both sides of all streets, no matter where in the city. The committee talked about the different options, and they voted seven to four in favor of option four, which is essentially to require, to allow for a waiver of sidewalks if it is beyond 500 feet from an existing sidewalk, or more than 1,000 feet from a park, school, or a bus route. The option would allow for a waiver without paying any money for that sidewalk, nor would any money be deposited with the city to use for sidewalks in other places of the city. So that was what the committee voted on. The ordinance that's in front of you, 1606, has been redrafted to reflect those changes.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay, do we have a motion?
Oh, well, can I just say that I will not be voting in favor of this for the same reasons that I've said in the past. Our code, our comprehensive plan, and our strategic plan, and lots of other information in society suggests that sidewalks, that we want to have sidewalks in our town, and I think that this is, this ordinance is a move backwards. You know, in 2012, we had hoped that we would be able to put sidewalks in this area, and given that we had some budget problems, and the budget's gotten tighter, we were not able to do that. I know that there aren't a lot of houses that fit this particular criteria right now, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. It, you know, these in-town lots could start selling, and there could be more homes. So, right now, this fee, I'm in favor of waiving the requirement for a sidewalk, but I'm not in favor of waiving the fee, so I won't vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? We have a motion then on ordinance 16-06.
We don't.
We need a motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion to pass ordinance 1606, amending Title 11, Chapter 5, Section 9 of the municipal code sidewalks.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by McFadden, to pass ordinance 16-06. Roll call, please.
Stark? No. Chantet?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
No.
Motion's passed, 10 to 4. Okay, thank you. Move on to ordinance 16-12. This is for amending the Title 8 of the Potavia Municipal Code related to the electric service regulations and rates. Alderman O'Brien.
The city retained Baker Tilly in 2015 to analyze our electric rates and to make a recommendation on our rate structure. Recommendation they made was to establish a new rate classification. It was for a large general service rate, to be effective May 1st, 2016. And it is, the classification is to utilize the amount of kilowatt-hours between 30 million and 50 million. Our largest rate is 50 million, 50 million and above, so they wanted to find something somewhat in the middle. And so, and that's 30 million to 50 million kilowatt-hours per year. So that's pretty much what we have. We had a discussion on that. There are a couple of other things in this ordinance that they cleaned up, dates and things. So, any discussion? Anybody have any questions regarding this?
Nobody has any questions for conversation? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We pass ordinance 16-12, revision to Potavia Municipal Code relating to electric services, service regulations, and rates, electric rate classification.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Mueller. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Motion's carried, 14 to 0. Alderman Wolf, the next item is yours also.
This is Resolution 16-22-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment from Henderson Truck Equipment for a total of $42,300. This is for one of the street division trucks, 2016 Ford F-50 chassis, and we approved that earlier this year. This would be the equipment, which I believe the plow and bed and everything for it, the dump box and everything on it, including emergency lighting, salt spreader, everything that we'd need for that truck. And it did come in under budget. So I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution 16-22-R, authorization of purchase truck equipment from Henderson Truck Equipment for a total of $42,300.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Stark. Any comments or questions?
It is budgeted for, correct?
Yes, it is budgeted for, and both of the trucks are under budget.
Okay, roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Motion's carried, 14 to 0. Alderman Wolf, the next item is yours also.
This is Resolution 16-22-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment from Henderson Truck Equipment for a total of $42,300. This is for one of the street division trucks, 2016 Ford F-50 chassis, and we approved that earlier this year. This would be the equipment, which I believe the plow and bed and everything for it, the dump box and everything on it, including emergency lighting, salt spreader, everything that we'd need for that truck. And it did come in under budget. So I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution 16-22-R, authorization of purchase truck equipment from Henderson Truck Equipment for a total of $42,300.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Stark. Any comments or questions?
It is budgeted for, correct?
Yes, it is budgeted for, and both of the trucks are under budget.
Okay, roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Motion's carried, 14 to 0. Alderman Wolf, the next item is yours also.
This is Resolution 16-23-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment from Monroe Truck. Alderman Wolf. This is for the full-size dump truck, a bit more expensive, and it is still under budget. Came in with a total for both the equipment and the chassis of $139,000, where we had budgeted $150,000, so quite a bit under budget. I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 16-23-R, authorization to purchase truck equipment from Monroe Truck Equipment for a total of $63,064.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried, 14 to 0. Next item is item 17, which is Resolution 16-26-R, authorizing the task order number 19 with RJN Group for Engineering Study of First Street. Alderman O'Brien.
The city hired RJN Group out of Wheaton for a detailed engineering investigation to determine the cause of the sewer surcharging during the heavy rain events of last June, June 2015. You know, we discussed this at committee, how important it is to start addressing this. We have it budgeted, I believe, $400,000, excuse me, $400,000 in the budget to start addressing some of these issues regarding our storm sewer and sanitary backup. It is in the city's First Street sanitary sewer basin, and so I guess I'll make a motion for passage of Resolution 16-26-R, authorizing task order number 19 with RJN Group Professional Engineering Services related to First Street Sewer Basin Flow Monitoring not to exceed $73,895.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by McFadden. Any comments or questions?
Dave?
Alderman Wolf?
I had made a comment and asked John Dillon about the flow directions and everything that was on there, and if you blow up the map far enough, you can actually see the arrows, and the green lines actually become arrows. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that's where that's actually at, if anybody wants to look at that.
Yeah.
You can actually see it if you blow the map up big enough.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Did he send that out to everyone?
It's in the original.
It's in the original.
You blow it up, but you have to blow it up a lot to be able to see it. And then you can tell which way they're going.
I just want to make a comment, Alderman O'Brien, just like you just said, you know, with the June flood event that we had, I just want to make sure that we kind of keep this word going out to the public that we are committed to do what we can do with the funds that we do have. As you said, we put $400,000 into the budget this year to start working on this, and it's gonna take studies like this to figure out what we can do to try to correct some of these issues throughout our town. And it's something that our Public Works Department and Engineering is working very hard on for us to try to get resolved, so thank you for your comments.
I believe also, just to piggyback on that, is in this basin, we have Blaine Street and Morton Street, which suffered greatly, residents there with a lot of sewer backup and sanitary sewage. So it's really, it's a health issue for the people, so I'm glad we're addressing that first.
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to see it addressed first one, but this is more important, I believe, so we'll leave it at that.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bodeman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Ordinance 16-26-R is approved, 14 to 0. Next item is item 18, administrator's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thank you. Couple of some newsworthy items. The Parkway Tree Program has now started. The details are on the front page of the city website. You can do a 50-50 split with the city for trees to be planted in the spring or the fall. There are three different types of trees available for spring planting and seven for the fall. If you are in a neighborhood that has wires over your parkway, you can still get a tree. It's limited to a particular crab apple tree that won't bother to disturb the wires. For the spring planting, the deadline is April 1st, and the 50% share ranges from $120 to $170. The trees are grown in our climate. They come with a one-year warranty. The city will examine them a year from now to make sure that they're healthy trees. So if you're interested in helping reforest the city and your parkway, then please just go to the website. I want to remind people now that the weather seems to be getting better, that you can put yard waste out on your regular garbage day. Requires a sticker and either a paper bag, a well-marked garbage can weighing not more than 50 pounds, or you can put out bundles of sticks or limbs, as long as that bundle tied together is no longer than four feet, two feet in diameter and weighing more than 50 pounds. I can remind you that the actual brush program starts in May, so if you want to get rid of some things before that, this is what to do. The city is cooperating with the Conservation Foundation to do the annual rain barrel sale. You can order online until April 27th. There's also going to be an activity here at City Hall about rain barrels and rain gardens, and you can go to our website for more details. We're dealing with some potential retirements. I think I've talked the past couple of meetings that, excuse me, we do have some people who are starting to head towards retirement, so we're already dealing with, working with a couple of people. In connection with the replacement of the city administrator, the HR department conducted strength assessments of all the department heads, and they're going to present those assessments, not only will the department heads talk about those with each other, but they're going to present those assessments to the new administrator and ask him or her to take that assessment as well, so that the team kind of has an idea of how each other works. I think it's a really good idea, and I appreciate Wendy coming up with that idea. the Community Development Department has already been going back through the zoning ordinance, trying to identify things that are either unfriendly to businesses or residents, or things that seem to be just a little too, too many obstacles to get through for people. So they're going to be coming to Cow pretty soon and talk about some of those things with you. And additionally, Scott's decided that when we do actually have a variance that goes through, after that, there's gonna be kind of a post-review or post-variance review to look at, take that whole issue apart and see whether really they should come back to you and look for a code change, whether it would still require a variance, or whether it's some other action that could be taken on the part of the staff in an administrative capacity instead of it going through such a formalized process. So that way, we'll always be looking at what we're doing. So for example, I think the variance that was granted tonight for the house at 514 Main Street to narrow the setbacks for the rebuilding of a new garage, I think that's an issue that's very common to the older part of town, where the lots basically are narrow and deep. And even being able to move a garage closer to a property line by a couple of feet can have a huge impact on the size of the yard that a family will have, and that eventually equates to quality of life. Especially since most, or many of the garages in those areas are all detached anyway. So I think that's a good example, so they'll be looking at that as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Kevin?
I was wondering if you could update us on the status of the food pantry and that. Are we still looking at relocating?
Well, we're still looking for a space. If we have not been able to find one yet. So if that doesn't happen, and I think, I've been talking with Gary, if that doesn't, if we can't locate something in the next two weeks, then unless the council is willing to kind of take the responsibility of saying, "We will find a place," then I think it's gonna have to stay there, and we're gonna have to design around it. I'll write a memo, and that'll be up to the council to kind of work through. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to Committee Reports. Alderman ATEC is Chairman of Government Services.
Yes, tomorrow night at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, March 8th, we will be talking about city revenues and priorities. And that is all the Government Services has on the agenda for the next few weeks. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Stark is Vice Chair of Community Development.
Tomorrow evening for the Cow, there's nothing on the agenda for Community Development. The Environmental Commission will meet on March 9th. On March 14th, Monday, the Historic Preservation and Bicycle Commission will meet. On the 15th, which is next Tuesday, at the Cow Meeting, Community Development will be talking about the Community Land Trust Study Continued, the annexation part of BNSF at Kirk Road, implementing contractor registration continued, the bridge sculpture, the Dunkin' Donuts Shell drive-through ordinances. And then on March 16th, Plan Commission meets.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wolf is Chairman of City Services.
Thank you. Tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole, City Services, has the 2016 Sidewalk and Curb Replacement Program and the Intergovernmental Agreement for Firefighter Testing. And then on March 15th, at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, we have the 2016 Annual Tree Terminating Contact.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Alderman Wolf is, or I'm sorry, Alderman O'Brien is Chairman of Public Utility.
We have nothing on the agenda for public utilities for the month, for the month of March.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a comment on the Environmental Commission. With the mayor being out of town, he asked me if I would go to the environmental movie out, movie night out at the movies Saturday night. And I did, and I actually really enjoyed it. There was a movie on bicycles versus cars. And I found it really interesting. It was, they had a lot of facts in there about the amount of cars that are versus the bikes and the different countries, what they're doing about the transportation and stuff, and it was really interesting. But what I kind of wanted to make a comment on was that the Chairman of the Commission, Carolyn, informed me when I was talking to her a couple of days before it that we're down two people in that commission. And I know the mayor is working on trying to fill that, so I'm just trying to get the word out to the public also that there appears to be one additional person that's gonna get appointed. Abby Beck, I think, is gonna take that position, and the mayor's gonna appoint her soon, hopefully. And then there still is one more position open, and would like to try to get that filled. It's hard to accomplish anything when you don't have a full roster on your commission. So Carolyn had expressed that to me, and I just wanted to kind of help her get that word out that, looking to fill that committee. So if anybody knows anybody that's got some time, it doesn't take much time. They don't meet real often, but they do meet every now and then, and they try to do the right thing for the environment. So does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Motion by O'Brien?
Second.
Second by Stark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. Adjourned, thank you.